Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our City Council Study Session. For the record, it's May 27, 2025, and it's 1:00 P. M. We have two items on our study session agenda today. One is a Workforce Housing Policy Overview Update, and the other one is a presentation on regionalism, focusing on water resource planning, et cetera. So I just want to make sure that both presenters have probably a fair amount of time to present. So we have a little less than two hours for these two topics. And I think workforce housing will probably give them about 50 minutes. And since regionalism has a 38-page presentation, we're going to give them 55 minutes. How about that? That'll give us at least a couple of minutes to be prepared for the voting meeting. It starts at 3:00. So we'll start with a roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protem Cantelmi.
Here.
Councilwoman Freworth.
Here.
Councilman Gambogi.
I am here.
Councilman Grady. Councilman Montoya.
Still here.
And Councilman Moore.
Here.
All are present. I wanted to also just make a quick announcement up top. As most of you are aware, this room was just recently completed. This is our new council chambers. And in the interest of trying to keep it in the best condition possible, we are not going to allow food or beverage to be brought into the council chambers so that we can keep it nice and clean. So with that in mind, we will get to our first item, which is a presentation and discussion regarding workforce housing policy from the Workforce Housing Committee.
And I do want to mention that if we take public comment, again, public comment is going to be restricted to three minutes. So if you do want to have public comment, please think about preparing your comments and making sure that they're completed within three minutes. Please proceed, Amber.
All right. Do I have to... Testing this one. Okay. Good afternoon, mayor and council. Thank you for having us here. I'm Amber Fraser with the City Manager's Office, but also one of the staff liaisons for the Workforce Housing Committee. So as you know, the committee was formed in response to the growing challenges of ensuring that our workforce can afford to live and work in Prescott. Since its establishment, the committee has met regularly, reviewed best practices from peer communities, and engaged local stakeholders to better understand the barriers to workforce housing in our city. The draft policy presented today reflects a great deal of time, effort, and collaboration. It proposes a range of tools and strategies to address this complex issue. We recognize that there is no one-size-fits-all, and addressing this challenge will require a multifaceted approach. At this time, we're seeking your direction. We welcome your feedback to the overall policy, including elements you'd like us to explore further or elements you may not support. Your input will help guide the next steps and ensure the committee is working aligned with the council's vision on how to address the workforce housing in our area. So with that, I will turn this over to our chair, Nicole Kidney, and our member Randy Goodman. So thank you.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. It's a pleasure to be here with you. Do you want to say hi? Okay. First, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to be here in the first place. We acknowledge that this committee would not exist were it not for the direction of the mayor and council. And so I just want to wholeheartedly thank you on behalf of the committee and on behalf of the community for creating us. I'd also like to ask each of you a question. As we've been, you know, really digging into this work over the last almost two years, we've become, I think, really attuned with what our why is, like, why we're here. And I'd love to hear from each one of you what your why is. Why is workforce housing important to you and your role in the community? May I start with you, mayor?
Well, I think we all recognize the need to have housing that's affordable for not only our primary first responders and our other essential workers, whether that's nurses or healthcare providers, teachers, police, fire, EMS. All those, I think, are really important. But I think a lot of people that live in our community also want to see a lot of retail services. I mean, I frequently hear from people saying, "Well, we need a real fine dining restaurant here." I said, "You're right. Would you like to volunteer to be a server?" "Oh, no, I couldn't do that, but we need one." Well, we need to have servers, and we need to have cooks. And all those things that make a vibrant local economy work well all require people that we would hope could afford to live in the city and not have to commute from a far distance. Because there are other local neighbors that might have a little lower-cost housing, and a lot of those essential workers can work in other communities and work in other communities by living there and not having to commute into the city. So I think if we can find a solution to this problem, then our ability to have a vibrant local economy with all the essential services provided will be dramatically enhanced.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Freworth.
Thank you, mayor. I had this as one of my priorities when I was campaigning for office, because you can't help but go out and talk to thousands of voters while you're trying to get signatures and hear the need for economic development and adding more families and more taxpayers to our community, those that have a real vested interest because they're part of the local economy. And then also, when you think about our public safety and our traffic problems, trying to get people that want to be here most of the day to be able to spend their nights here, too, would add to our morning and afternoon commute issues. So for many reasons, I am very interested in this topic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem, how about you?
Thank you, mayor. Well, as the council liaison to this committee for the last two years and a former builder, it's been an interesting foray into the whole world of workforce housing. And as Randy knows, as a general contractor, it's very, very hard to get this to pencil out, financially speaking, for builders to be able to provide this product. There's going to have to be incentives. You know, probably my desire is, this is a desire to have, you know, a path to homeownership for these young working people, police, nurses, firemen, the teachers. We've got to have a way for them to do it. Once you get on this path to homeownership, it's also ultimately a path to any personal wealth. It's the largest purchase any of us will make, most of us will make, is a home. And if they're going to provide themselves with wealth growth as they go through life, it's going to have to be through their residence. So, you know, giving them, you know, a hand up, not necessarily a handout, is going to be a very interesting process to go through. But I think it's, and Nicole, you've been so good at that, is bringing the community in and helping them understand what it's going to take. For the benefit of the members of the council here, the biggest problem we have is getting over the down payment. We've seen the interest. I remember when I bought my first home, it was 17%. We've seen the interest rate to purchase go, what, up to 7% and 8%, I've seen lately. They can't possibly have the ability to save that kind of money. So if they can get, they can many times afford the payment for a loan. They just cannot get the down payment. So I know you've been making some effort towards that and, you know, allowing these people to get into that home. And Aunt Randy, you will, too. So I think everybody will be interested to see how this has worked out through the committee. Thanks for your hard work.
Thank you.
Councilman Gambogi.
I think the work you're doing is very important. Throughout the United States, throughout the world, we have a problem with workforce housing. And it's a problem that's brought onto us by many exogenous variables. 60% of the city staff live outside of Prescott. And I think that anyone that does work for the city of Prescott, be it teaching, healthcare, police, fire, ought to be able to live in Prescott if they so choose. And by doing so, there's less traffic on 89 and less traffic on 69, which makes driving those two roads just a little bit better. So it's a long pull. There's no universal answers. You're pedaling uphill, but as an old cyclist, we used to say, "There's no hill for a hill climber."
Councilman Grady.
Thank you, mayor. I believe this is really one of my highest priorities. I've been involved with Habitat for Humanity since the 1980s in another community. And I think just addressing people's housing needs has a significant impact on their lives. And obviously, there's a couple of differences, you know, between rental and homeownership. And Habitat focused more on homeownership. But I also think lower-cost rental housing is critical. And it is a linkage, as others have said, to economic development, to business retention, employee retention. But also for folks, businesses looking to move to our community, I think that's a real high priority to see how we can address those imbalances.
Thank you.
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, mayor. I'll be real brief. Basically, a lot of the things that people have already said are part of my why. I think it's an important issue. It's one I've heard a lot about. So I am anxious and excited to hear more of your presentation. So I'll yield my time so that you can give more time to that. Thank you.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, mayor. I think for me, as a father and a grandfather, it's really important that we have an opportunity for young adults to live in our community and raise their children in our community. Not one of our adult children live in this community. They've all moved away. And I remember when we moved here, there were, I think, seven elementary schools. Two of those elementary schools have closed since we've lived here. Dexter Elementary closed, and Washington Traditional School became the school district office. So we see a change in the demographics of our community. And I think a balanced community with families and youth and children would be really beneficial to our community.
Thank you. Well, thank you all for your feedback. It's just very gratifying to know how important this is to all of you personally and professionally. So I want to go to the next slide. Workforce Housing by the Numbers. As you'll see here, we have a ranking of all the different, just kind of typical professions in the community. And with the red line toward the bottom there, separating those who can actually attainably live here and those who cannot. So the firefighters, the pharmacy techs, the waitresses, the nursing assistants. It's pretty compelling to show what rent they can actually afford and what rents, as we know, are out there. So of those, really, it's only police and nurses that are even barely above that threshold. I want to talk a little bit about myths because I think that's something that is really pervasive in the topic of workforce housing. And so I want to recap. You probably know these, but I do think it bears repeating in this forum to be able to talk about some of the common myths as it pertains to workforce housing. I think one of the first ones is that it brings down property values. And I think it's important for the community to know and for all of you to uphold the truth in that properly designed and managed workforce housing developments absolutely do not negatively impact values. In fact, they often increase the neighboring values because of, you know, strengthening the community. So number two, that myth is that it increases crime. Again, absolutely not true. In fact, data has shown that police calls per unit are often lower for apartment complexes that have workforce housing than single-family homes, which personally, that surprised me. So and then number three, that this is Section 8 housing. Absolutely not Section 8 housing. When we talk about the demographics, we're serving people that are earning between 60% and 120% of the area median income. Section 8 is generally for people at 50% or less. Any questions on any of that? Okay, next slide. This is a nice, handy worksheet that's made possible by Gorman &amp; Company. They're a Lytech developer in the state of Arizona. And it just shows at a glance the demographic that we're serving. So just briefly, if it's a single person, generally speaking, they're earning between $35,000 to $70,000 roughly. Of course, that changes every year. And a family of four is earning between $50,000 and $100,000 per year. Okay, next slide. As Amber mentioned earlier, community engagement has been really important to the work that we're doing. And as I'm sure you take to heart, we represent our community. So we've started with, of course, public comments during our Workforce Housing Committee meetings. We've enacted surveys to get feedback from the community, stakeholder meetings with various stakeholders, many of whom are here today and who've been just very committed to attending all of these meetings. We've had a town hall where we received feedback, and it was a really great, engaging session. And then we also have a Participate Prescott page. So if you haven't checked that out, I would encourage you to do so. Next slide. Okay, eligibility. We do want to point out that the people that we're looking to serve are full-time workers in Yavapai County. We recognize, of course, that any projects are tied to city limits. We don't have control outside of the city. But that incentives can benefit residents both in and out of the city and around the county. All right, and now it's Randy.
Come on, Dick.
Yes.
Well, before I get into the weeds of this, I know some of you on the council, thank you for having us here today. My name is Randy Goodman, and I have a unique perspective. I spent 30 years in the fire service, and I spent 44 years as a developer contractor, because all firemen in my day did that on the side. So I have the ability to see this situation from both sides. The city that I worked for was very expensive to live. So we addressed workforce housing many, many years ago. We just didn't call it that. So I have a unique perspective. And what I want to say about that is I hear a lot about, "We've got a problem. We've got to address it." Guys, we have a crisis, is what we have. We met with the Assistant Police Chief, I don't know, four or five months ago. We had 16 openings, which you're probably aware of. We had four applicants. That is a crisis. You cannot run your police and fire agencies on overtime. When you do that, which we did in my municipality, what happens is eventually the employees get burned out. They start making mistakes. Mistakes cost you all money because there's lawsuits involved, and they get hurt. So it becomes very, very expensive. So to think that we can go on like this, you can't. So we have to address this now. And that's what we've been trying to work on for the last two years. So with that said, I want to get into the weeds. If you have the handout, you refer to page eight. As a developer, when I looked at this, and as an ex-city employee, realizing the city isn't just a cash cow, I tried to look for things, or we, as a committee, tried to look for things where it was minimal or no cost to the city that would provide incentives to developers to come in here and do workforce. And on page eight, we talk about that. We talk about reimbursements, which would cost. We talk about fee waivers, eligibility and restrictions, and development impact fees. Now, we can't defer development impact fees. They have to be paid. That's a state deal. If we do do that, then you, the city, would have to pay that. Somebody's got to pay that. But there's a lot of other things we can do. Remember, in development, time is money. So if we can shorten the time of approval, we save the developer money. We also require upfront that the developer pay, you know, inspection fees and plan check fees and all these other fees that I just paid on a project not too long ago. We could look at deferring that to the end of the project. Because remember, the way a construction loan works is you pay interest on the money you use only. You don't pay interest on the money you're not using. So in my case, my development fees were a little over $200,000. I had to pay interest on that $200,000 from the very beginning of the project. Whereas if we deferred to the end of the project, you would have saved me a lot of money. To me, saving money means I can do more in the workforce area because it didn't cost me as much to develop it. So if you turn to page, I guess it's nine, we give some percentages. We talk about how much workforce we can encourage. And let me back up and say this. How do you get workforce? How do you educate the public that we need workforce? I think we need to put this kind of on our city staff. When somebody like me comes to the counter and says, "Hey, I'm considering doing a multifamily project," and staff says to me, "Oh, by the way, are you aware of our workforce policies? And here's the incentives that we can offer you." And I'm like, "No, I never even thought about it." So our staff at the counter can be our best advertisement to attain workforce. Because some people will come in there and will not even realize that that's on the table. And they can present a package that we're trying to put together that we hope you approve, that we can be handed out to that developer, and maybe it'll work, maybe it won't.
Randy, what kind of interest rate are you paying on a construction loan?
Well, I don't have anything under construction right now, but I paid six and a half. So it was expensive.
So if that can be deferred for six months or a year, that adds up to a decent amount of money.
Well, you couldn't defer the interest, of course, because that'd be a bank thing. But the money that I have to spend in the front side, if I could backload that, yes, it would be a lot of money. Is that what you meant? Yeah, you're exactly right.
Mayor Protem.
You know, I kind of wanted to add to that, too, because Randy and I had spoken before after he pulled the numbers for some of these projects. And I had mentioned that if this project goes out there, and let's just say 50% is workforce housing and 50% is market value, if Randy were to have sold the first five units, he would have enough profit at the time to not accumulate that. And that would be a good time to be able to pay those fees, you know, because now theoretically, he's made a little profit on the project, and he can now pay those fees upfront without having to, you know, mortgage the whole place over that because those loans are, at 6.5% interest, very expensive.
Well, that would be another option for you, the council, that you're talking about sort of a progressive step-as-you-go, pay-as-you-go kind of a thing. What we're proposing is to backload it, all of it. Now, obviously, staff has to be paid, and that pay has to be charged at something. But over time, those backloads would be reimbursing, and you guys realize that money. It's not, we're not giving anything away here. We're just asking to defer to the end so we save the interest on that money. But on page nine of your handout, we talk about expediting the project. I said earlier, interest and time cost money. So if we can expedite this project for the developer, for workforce, we're going to save him time, which is going to save him money. Because remember, he's already spending money, and he's already invested money in this project. So yeah, the normal developers, if they're out there in the audience, are all going to want to hang me. But if you're doing a percentage, and you'll decide the percentage of workforce, we're going to put you to the front of the line. Now, at first, normal developer guys like me are going to be screaming their heads off, and you guys are going to take the heat for it. But over time, everybody will get used to it, just like any other change. We all understand that workforce... Let me just say this. Let me back up, and I know Nicole feels the same way. This is, as you know, it's not just our problem. It's regional. It's across the entire United States. And we all have to put in a little bit of sweat equity here. Everybody, everybody in this room, we all have to sacrifice a little bit to make this work. And this is one of the ways. If I put 20% of workforce in, or 30% of my project, or in your case, Connie, 50%, yeah, I get to go to the front of the line. And I expedite my plan check, and I get pushed through quick. I don't, you know, I amend all the building codes. There isn't anything going on weird there. But I just move faster through the process, and my project begins sooner. Saves me money, allows me to provide more workforce. So expedited plan review is what we're talking about there. And there's also fees that I'll get into in a minute, you know, with zoning and your subdivision fees and your plot fees. Once again, backload those things if you can. Don't discount, just backload. If you guys decide to discount, great. That's something that the council has to decide because, once again, somebody's got to pay staff to take care of those things. If we go to page 11, and we're going to talk briefly about density bonuses. Now, obviously, with development, density creates more success. So if you say to me, "Well, you can only build 10 units on that lot under normal circumstances, but because I'm going to do all workforce, you can put 12 or 13." Well, now you just made that project more profitable for me to do workforce, allowing me to do workforce. But in order to increase density, something has to give up. Parking has to be given up. Maybe it isn't going to have as many trees and bushes as it should have, those kinds of things. Once again, you, council, have to take the heat for that. Because if people are upset, that's, you're the ones that are going to answer for that. But we have to do something to incentivize these builders to come in and build our workforce housing for us. And density bonuses are something that we can do. Now, in discussion with other cities, they do this upfront. When we first started talking about this as a board, it was like, "Well, we'll do it a case-by-case basis." But case-by-case basis takes time. And I just talked about time is money. So if we can come up with a program that says, "If you do X, you qualify for Y, and here it is. Here's Y. We hand it out, done." We don't have to do a review. We don't have to do a case-by-case. Here it is. Follow this program, and we'll approve you because of the density bonus. Once again, that's a decision for you to make. But I think that's something we should really look at. If we can offer those to, with our staff standing at counter, "Here's your package, Mr. Developer. Your density bonuses are explained right there." Your density bonuses are explained right there."
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a question for the both of you, and if I'm jumping ahead and you're going to answer this question, you can tell me. But I love the idea of some of these ideas, or I love the notion behind some of these ideas, I should say. I'm curious, what's to ensure that it stays workforce housing? Because I think that's a question that's on my mind, because someone may get these benefits and bonuses on the front end, and for maybe four or five years, it is workforce housing. But then, we've seen in the past, other communities in, you know, other neighborhoods in this community where there's been a notion that they're going to do workforce housing. And then, over time, once you get past, especially with homeownership, you get past that first layer, and then people are, you know, part of why, to Connie's point, you know, people like the idea of owning home and building wealth is that they can profit on that at some point. Did you guys have conversations and contemplation with how to, how do we give these bonuses and incentives and ensure that they're still maintaining that purpose? And again, if I'm jumping ahead, tell me, we'll get to that, that's fine.
We will get to that, but do you want to give-
Yeah, I mean, if you turn to page 23 in your handout, it starts right there. And you're, Councilman Montoya, you're 100% right. We have to-
I like the sound of that.
We have to, we have to maintain workforce, not just one time, two times, or three times. We have to maintain workforce for 20 years, 30 years. We recommend 20 to 30 years. You guys will decide. But in order to do that, we have to hold our developers accountable. Now, realize, a lot of developers will be gone. They'll do a project, they'll form an HOA board, and they're out of there. But with deed restrictions and agreements with that HOA board, we hold them accountable so that we have multi-generational workforce housing in that same property.
Thank you.
Okay. Are you on deck now, or am I still up?
Yep.
Let me just, let me keep rambling.
You're next.
I'll give her a minute. Going back to the fireman that's standing here in front of you, and trying to retain employees, we found that if we can hang on to employee for five to six years, then they're vetted in our system, they become part of the fabric of our city, and they don't leave. If we can't do that, we're going to lose them in the first one to three years. So as we looked at this problem, and we talked to the fire chief and the police chief about this, if we can come up with a rental program with workforce, where the fire chief who's sitting right there can say, "All right, I've got a home for you for your first probational year. Don't worry about housing, I've got it. And you're going to pay 14 or whatever, 1400 a month, because that's kind of what they can afford." So he retains that employee through his probationary period. Once they get through probation, if we can offer home of your own, down payment assistance, and it can be paid back over a five-year period, and they stay here and pay it back, that means we have that employee for six years. Well, guess what just happened? They're not leaving. And I know one of the councilmen over there has told me many times how much it costs us to lose, to train a police officer and then lose that police officer. It's millions. So in comparison to the money we're spending to train police officers and then lose them to keeping them in our system for six years, and then they're vetted in our program and they don't leave, something to think about. Okay.
This is your last slide.
That's my last slide?
Yes.
No, you're doing water. Sorry.
No. I'm happy to step in, but that's-
I need a drink of water.
Okay. All right. We are pivoting on the fly here. So infrastructure, location, and development support. One of the items, as we know, water is always a hot topic, and one of the, we felt like kind of simple solutions around that would be just to give them priority allocation towards, you know, their project, assuming the eligibility that you guys determine. And then, of course, zoning flexibility is a big one. I do want to piggyback back on to what Randy was talking about with the density bonus. And in order, I don't know if you said this, Randy, but I didn't hear it the same way. I think it would be important, we feel it would be important, that it was actually in code, so that if, you know, assuming that you like this idea of a density bonus, and it meets the parameters that you, that we set forth, that they're not having to go to a planning and zoning meeting, and having to go through that whole, that time and delay and all of that, that they just know that it's greenlighted if it meets those criteria, which speaks a little bit to the zoning flexibility. Of course, infill is an important one. And Councilman Gambogie, I know you had asked a question previously about infill specifically. And while it's not something we didn't get into the weeds about, I do think it's important that we can consider both remodels and new builds with those same kind of criteria. Let's see. Of course, Home of My Own, we've talked about that at length, and you all know about that. The latest that I've heard from Amber is that that is now with the county attorney, so we're just waiting on final approval for that to be able to go forward. Any other points you want to make there?
No, it's super good. I'm going to, to dovetail on what she just said, if you turn to page 21, so I'm jumping ahead a little bit here, in your handout, we talk about city-owned property. City owns a lot of real estate. There's a lot of opportunities for us to partner with private industry with our city-owned property to create workforce housing. And there's many ways, I, let's back up. I did a project, a mock project, on a city-owned property last year to see if I could make it work. Well, guess what? It didn't work. I came about $30 a square foot shy of what I needed to make it work. But the proposal for that piece was to defer the purchase of the land for 10 years, city-owned land. So basically, we're in partners together, the private developer and the city-owned land, to defer that cost of that property for 10 years, lock it in today, and pay it 10 years from now. So a great deal for the developer. That's an incentive, right? The problem was, there still wasn't enough money there. And this is all going to come down to money. But with our city-owned land and our infills, which Amber just mentioned, that would be an opportunity for us to partner with private enterprise and offer incentives on our own land to get them to do workforce housing. But you guys will have to decide, you know, how you want to do that. And I wanted to talk about briefly, too, pre-approved. If we go back to pages 15, 16, we talk about pre-approved plans for workforce. In other words, if we, we don't want to, we want things that fit in the community. We want things that fit in well. They're sustainable, they're going to last, they're not inferior. So we could, if we had pre-approved workforce plans that I could hand to a developer and say, "Here you go, build this. This is already approved." That would expedite, once again, like I talk about, expedition of a project saves money. Let's see, where are we? Excuse, you want to talk about this, or you want, I think we kind of covered it, really. I wanted you to-
Funding.
The funding, yeah, so.
Okay. So a few of the funding strategies, and you'll see some of these outlined here. There are a number of things, he mentioned earlier, public-private partnerships are a great one. A workforce housing trust fund, to have a dedicated fund to be able to support these kinds of projects. From a philanthropic standpoint, there's a lot of opportunity to, you know, to engage with the community, whether that's even grants and other types of, like, federal and state funding to support such projects. Anything else you want to talk about from a funding perspective?
No, I wanted to go back to private property for a moment. We put a proposal for, in front of you guys last year about ADU units.
Councilman Grady had a question.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I wanted to go back to the Yavapai County Pre-approved Program, Home of My Own, and I'm wondering what kind of track record that program has had to date. It may be only a couple of years old, but have you heard about what their track record?
It has been going for a few years, and I know they have a number of homes. I bet Sandy has that number memorized. Do you want to shout it out? Does anybody know the number off the top of their head?
She does.
Oh, Sandy. Thank you, Sandy. Sandy to the rescue.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Nicole. Councilman Grady, the pre-approved Home of My Own was started in Yavapai County, unincorporated Yavapai County, almost three years ago. To date, they have permitted over 65, a Home of My Own, in Yavapai County. The town of Prescott Valley has also approved these plans to start implementing them. Out of the 65 for Yavapai County, 50 are already built and occupied. So I hope that answers your question. It's still ongoing and has been widely received. They started with three plans, they now have six.
Thank you. Could I ask an additional question? So do, did those programs or those specific projects also have any incentives associated with them?
None whatsoever. Only because the plans are totally simplified, they're more of what you would call, or Councilwoman can't tell me, we would call a vanilla box, where they're relatively square. Nothing can be changed with these plans. They have to be built as is. After the fact, if the homeowner wanted to take on a change or an addition, then it's under their purview.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Mayor Brotem.
You know, I wanted to add on to that point real quick, too, and then I'll go back to my original point. So the cost associated with the Home of Our Own program, you still do have to get a draftsman to cite, you know, located on your particular lot. And that range is anywhere from $500 to $800. And Sandy's right, that they cannot structurally be changed. But you can change the paint color, you can change a few things that are cosmetic in that program. But the savings, I'm going to give you an example, for a 2,000-square-foot home today, to go meet with an architect, design it as per your lot, you're looking anywhere from $10,000 to $17,000. And then the time involved. And if you're paying for that money, that's what I wanted to talk about before. So what Randy's talking about, if, again, switching gears here to like a multifamily, higher-density project, if you start out with a $5 million upfront loan on a project like that, you're paying almost $30,000 a month just to hold that money. So when you have a holdup in the city, for example, you know, community development, and you've got to wait a year and a half, do the math, that $30,000 a month for a year and a half to get a permit, that's a sizable amount of money. And many guys can't make it, and they end up losing the project before it's even permitted. So that is a very serious problem. I think we, just expediting that, you're putting that money back into the developer's pocket to be able to move forward with the project. So it does have a huge, huge impact. Randy said it earlier, in construction, time is money is the motto for everybody, no matter what you're doing. Thanks.
Okay, you have about 10 minutes left. City clerk, do you have any public comment forms?
We do have one, Mayor.
Okay, so you've got seven minutes left.
Okay, I'll try to make it brief. I'm almost done. ADUs. ADUs is something that we can address right now. You guys can change that and make it legal for rental. And we feel like, as a board, that, yeah, some people will use it for whatever, but hopefully some workforce will be part of that percentage of ADU usage. And that's something that can happen today. We can look at the parking requirements, maybe we can loosen up a little bit there. It's something we have to look at as a board and make recommendations to you. We did make one recommendation last year about ADUs, so I wish you'd revisit that and take a look at that again. If we can approve that, remember, they're approved for vacation rental now, statewide. So if we can make them available for all our traveling nurses, I recently spent a long stint in the hospital, which wasn't much fun, 90% of the nurses that worked on me were travelers. They don't live here. They need a-
Councilman Gambogie, you had a question?
More, not a question, but more kind of a comment, wrap-up. I think sometimes, this is for the audience and those people watching online, sometimes we can get stuck in a paradigm, you know, like there's one solution. There's more than one solution, too, workforce housing. Now, earlier I said, "No one has figured it out," but there's three. The first one is pay essential workers, police, fire, teachers, healthcare workers, what it costs to live in Prescott, because it costs more to live here than it costs to live in Phoenix. The other one is to look into workforce housing, and the third is do nothing. And then we got people living in places like Paulding and Dewey and filling up the highways. I think it's important to understand that, having spent time on a planning commission where previous developers have come in to propose workforce housing, the residents have come out in droves to say, "No, not here." So I think when we look at the general plan and zoning and annexing, we need to give more serious consideration to annexing, because that impacts our ability to develop workforce housing. And there's not just one solution within workforce housing. Sometimes we get stuck with, we're thinking about building new. We don't always have to build new. But what we need is a mix of opportunities. And to Randy's earlier point, the longer we keep police, fire, teachers here, the more they become an example of what you talked about, like our police chief, Amy Bonney. I mean, she's lived here, Denver can offer her 20 grand or more, she's not leaving. And if we can create that culture in a great city that we live in, then I think we're, we may have the solution. So you've done a great job. Thank you very much.
Let me just end quickly, because I know we're running out of time. On the last part of our booklet here on page 25, 24, we talk about penalties. So we take it real serious. If our developers don't do what they agree to do, we propose several penalties that we can do to these guys to get them back on board for workforce. I don't want to give them all the incentives, and then we find out later that they didn't do what they agreed to do with us. So we outlined some penalties, you can look through that. And then finally, on the last page, we really want to develop a guidebook for workforce that I can hand to that developer, and he can take it home and read it, and follow it, hopefully, and be incentivized to do some workforce. So that's it for me. Thank you, and I'll turn it over to Nicole, and that's a wrap.
Since Councilman Montoya asked specifically about the accountability, I want to spend just a moment on that. One of the important pieces is having dedicated staff to really hold the developers and builders accountable, so they would be managing the oversight on that, also educating them, as Randy talked about earlier. But they would also be held accountable to timelines, so that they couldn't wait to do the workforce housing element at the very end of a phased project, for example, and say, "Oops, I'm out of money." So consequences could be, you know, revoking any kind of incentive they had, et cetera. So just wanted to point that out. And once again, I want to thank you. As you've indicated, it's a monumental issue, and we really do believe that it's going to take a myriad of solutions, and we hope that you will carefully consider all that we've shared with you.
One last thing, you guys. I forgot to say this. Thank you to staff. We, as a council, put a lot of time in this, but staff's been so valuable to us, and they've really engaged with us. And Connie's come to every one of our meetings, and she's engaged, so I just want to thank them for their effort. And I hope that some of this works for you, that you'll employ this, because I don't want to crush the spirit of the board or staff. Everybody's got a good, positive attitude, and they're working hard to solve this, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy, and thank you, Nicole. Councilwoman Foworth, you have a comment before we go to public comment?
Yeah, I do have a comment. Overall, I didn't get the deck until right before this meeting, so I didn't get a chance to see it until just now. But I did spend a lot of time in our pre-reading package, working on the policy. So overall, conceptually, I understand, I'm aligned, I'm supportive. But I have a bunch of questions and nuanced, you know, concerns, and so what's the best way for us to begin to have that engagement with the committee?
So there's a couple options. You're absolutely welcome to send me red lines. That's a lot of how we worked as the committee, is they went through, they redlined a lot of things and put in their notes, so you can send those to me. Or we can have a face-to-face meeting and discuss it. And then what we would do is take any input that we've received, any direction, we'll take it back to the committee, we'll rework through this. We understand that there's a lot of options and solutions, and there's also a lot of time and work that we'll need to go continually into this to be aligned with what council's looking for as well. So-
My preference is face-to-face discussion and dialogue, so.
All right.
Cool. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, we'll take public comment now.
Howard Mechanic.
I'm here, and counsel, I've attended most of these committee meetings, workforce housing committee meetings, and I've reviewed all their documents. I do support everything in the- I do support everything in the proposal. The issue that we have, it goes back two and a half years, when you, your human resources manager said we're in a crisis. That was talking about the city employees. Outside the city, in city limits, other businesses are in a crisis. That was two and a half years ago. We had a crisis. Has it gotten worse? Yes. The amount of income has gone up, but the cost of living has gone up at a higher percentage. If we had a crisis two and a half years ago, we have something more serious now. The question is, even though we may support everything in there, will an expert look at this proposal and say it will work? I want to talk about two things: scope and cost. Now, it's not in the report, and I don't know why, but the committee initially did a survey of the five largest nonprofit employers in the area. The police department, the fire department, CAFMA, school district, and the hospital. They need 900 units. Just five employers need 900 workforce housing units. So we're talking about well over 1,000, way more than 1,000 is necessary. If we build 100 or 200 through this proposal, where are we at? Is that success? No, it's not. So I'm suggesting that the major issue is the cost. Randy said his penciling out didn't work. He was short 30,000 a square foot. For a 2,000-square-foot home, you're short $60,000. This proposal here gives some incentives, small incentives-
You have 30 seconds, Howard.
Small incentives that aren't even close. He said that they're trying to do something that minimizes the cost to the city. I'm saying it won't work. If there is no money, if you're minimizing the money that you want to put in, we're wasting our time. It's going to be tokenism. You'll have a few units, and that will be it. Thank you.
Well, even to your comments, Mr. Mechanic, it's pretty clear to me this is a very complex problem. There are certain incentives that governments can enact to support such housing development, but a lot of it has to do with supply and demand. And I think we're starting to see the supply starting to increase. And I think with that, we'll see a kind of plateauing of increased lease costs and rental costs. I'm already seeing some smaller infill developments that a couple of years ago would have been completely filled within a week of opening. And now they're, they're filling up more gradually. You used to have to be able to get on a waiting list to even lease for two years. Now they're talking about maybe month to month. So I think the, those are the kinds of practical components of acquiring a rental unit that reflect the fact that the supply is starting to, to grow. So I think combining what the city might be able to do with what the private developers are doing will at least allow the problem not to get any worse. With that said, we'll now move on to our second item on the agenda. City Clerk, do you want to read that?
Presentation and discussion regarding regional water challenges from Mark Holmes and Gary Beverley.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's a pleasure to be here this afternoon, talk about a regional solution that the Town of Chino Valley feels very strongly in discussing with you. I'm Mark Holmes. I'm the water advisor for the Town of Chino Valley. I'm a professional geologist registered with the state of Arizona, been working in water resource management in Arizona for over 25 years. Co-presenting is going to be Gary Beverley. He is the president of the Citizens Water Advocacy Group, or SEWAG, and he'll be co-presenting with me this afternoon. We do have a lot of slides, but I think we can get through them, I think, relatively quickly, and hopefully have a really good discussion. So from the standpoint of here, and the presentation, why am I here from the Town of Chino Valley? Why is your water advisor here? So the new general plan for the Town of Chino Valley is stated very clearly. It's to protect the water resources within Chino Valley and looking outside of Chino Valley. It's also emphasized to participate in regional and local strategies, programs, and efforts to ensure sustainable water supplies are maintained in the area. So taking a step back, how did we get here? So I'm going to turn it over to Gary and talk about how we got here.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to speak to the council. Appreciate your invitation. So I'm going to give a brief description of the groundwater status in the Prescott Active Management Area, and it's not good news. I'm the bearer of bad news. Mark has the solution. So I'm the bad cop, he's the good cop in this. Let's go on to the next slide. Arizona water law, you know, the official purpose of it is to devise means and plans for the development, conservation, and utilization of all waterways, watershed, surface water, groundwater, and groundwater basins in the state. It doesn't really do that. Instead, what it does is it facilitates development. And there's a lot of problems with Arizona water law. I'm not going to go into all the details on that here, but it's very complex. I think it guarantees that water lawyers have a eternal job security and probably a really nice houseboat on Lake Powell. But we've got a problem. The problem here is in the Prescott Active Management Area. So the goal for this was put into place in 1999, when it was declared to be out of safe yield. Safe yield is a long-term balance between groundwater coming in to the groundwater system and, but water being removed from the system. So it's kind of a mass balance, a long-term balance between recharge and withdrawals. Now, safe yield is a management goal. It's not a requirement. There's no penalty. There's no incentives. I say ADWR provides data, but no assistance. They aren't even providing data now. Safe yield is a responsibility of the region, not ADWR. No regional plan for safe yield exists. Indeed, people aren't even planning to discuss, planning to, how to get there. So the safe yield policy is really kind of designed to fail. We all respond to incentives and pain, you know? And there's none of either in this plan. This page is from Prescott's Fifth Management Plan, and it points out that this is the worst performing AMA in the state. So if we look at the numbers from ADWR's website, they're graphed here, and I sure wish I had a pointer I could move around. So the, the top bar there is the annual change in groundwater storage. So the orange bars means we're in overdraft. There were three years in blue where we had more rain that was recharging the aquifer than was being pumped out. You can see that the overdraft level is roughly fairly constant since this data began being graphed here in 1985. The bottom graph shows if we keep adding in each annual overdraft, what's the cumulative overdraft? So it's, it ends in 2019. As I said, ADWR hasn't given us any data on this since 2019. We really don't appreciate that, because we, SEWAG is a science-based group, and we rely on the data, and we're not getting it. So it's, looks like the accumulated overdraft is over 600,000 acre feet. The annual overdraft is about 21,000 acre feet. That was in 2019. And just to get an idea of what that means, imagine a football field, four miles deep in water, every year is removed from our aquifer. So we're draining our groundwater resource, and we're 100% dependent on groundwater. So what? Well, here's some of the effects of this overdraft. It causes aquifer water levels to fall. So now here's why I really wish I had the pointer, so I could guide you through this.
Quinn or Chelsea, could one of you show him how to do the highlight area, please?
Oh, there is.
Nope.
Oh, cool. Thank you. Okay. So now I feel better. Thank you. So this black line kind of divides the Prescott AMA, which is circled here. It divides it into two sub-basins. The southeast section is the Agua Fria Aquifer Subbasin, and you can, and groundwater here moves from, this is roughly Highway 89A cuts across here. Groundwater flow is to the south, and it drains out the Agua Fria River. You can see that the red dots are wells that have decreased in water level since between 1924, 1994 and 2010. This massive hole right here is Prescott Valley Santa Fe Well Field. So the, the water level decline here is not too shocking, but if you look over here, you see that, you know, Prescott Valley is a new city. It only got to be pumping a lot of water into, into 2000. This chart from ADWR ends in 2010. This is another example of the lack of data we get from them. So basically, water levels in the Agua Fria are going down 2.4 feet a year. So that's not helpful. In the northern part of the AMA is the Little Chino Subbasin. And here you see in the northern part that groundwater levels have fallen over 100 feet, and that they're falling at about 1.5 feet a year. That was 15 years ago. So this is probably more like 120 feet decline now. Del Rio Springs is the only surface water outlet of the little, of the basin, and we're going to look at that next. So I want to point out-
Councilman Gambogi, you had a question?
Go ahead.
Yes, I do. Gary, you said the red dots are where the measurements have gone down over the years?
Correct.
What are, what are the blue dots?
The blue dots are recharge facilities. So there's Chino Valley's water recharge facility, here is Prescott's airport facility.
There's a lot of blue dots there.
In the Agua Fria River-
Right there is a lot.
Yeah, that's, there's, because you've got two regional creeks draining into the aquifer, and there's very, pretty much no groundwater demand in this area from Dewey-Humboldt.
So red is down, blue is up.
Correct. So the point is, is that Prescott Valley gets about 62% of their water from the Little Chino. The Little Chino here has been pumped very hard since the mid-1940s. It's the source of Prescott's water supply. And so water levels in this area have gone way down, way down, very quickly. That overdraft has caused Del Rio Springs to dry up. So this is a hydrograph of the flow from Del Rio Springs, and you can just see it goes down, down, down. In the mid-1950s, whoops, gotta push the right button, in the mid-1950s, the flow here was about 4,000 acre feet a year. It's now about 3% of that. In my lifetime here, I've been, I've lived in town a long time, Del Rio Springs has gone from a nice little torrent of water down to a trickle. And that's because groundwater pumping in the Little Chino has intercepted the groundwater flow that normally comes out Del Rio Springs. Del Rio Springs was the traditional headwaters of the Verde River. And so the Verde River is now also degraded. This, this thing is not working real well. That right there is a, results of a groundwater model by ADWR from the Third Management Plan, and it shows Del Rio Springs is projected to go dry in 2025, and they're exactly correct, because that's what's happening now. Groundwater pumping and climate change together are reducing the flow of the Verde River to really concerning levels. So these are some, this chart shows the change in the lowest, in the base flow of the river. That's the water that comes out of the Big Chino. And it's going down about a third of a cubic foot per second, per year. Right now, those, the river is flowing at about half of its pre-development value. That's due to groundwater pumping in the Big Chino. It's due to the groundwater pumping in the Little Chino. And it's due to the increased temperatures that we're seeing as part of regional temperature increases. So if this continues, we're going to see a dry river in a few decades. Now, the river is two and a half million years old, and it seems shocking to me that we could degrade it in a few decades. And then overdraft reduces the water levels in wells throughout the Active Management Area. And so here's a little chart that shows, this is a Google Earth view, and so we see here is Prescott Airport. Here's Granite Creek that flows north up to Del Rio Springs, is just off the map. Here's Prescott Valley here, here's Prescott, here's Highway 89 headed north, and we see all these yellow pins on the chart. So these are wells that are failing in the AMA. I want to note that the AMA, you see the mountains here on the, around the edges of the aquifer, it goes all the way around, and the water-bearing part is right in here in the middle. So on the edges of the AMA, we've got wells failing in West Chino Valley, Southwest Chino Valley, Williamson Valley Road, and Coyote Springs. Over 500 wells are failing. So how, how'd we get this information? We looked at high-resolution imagery from Google Earth and found these tanks. It's a 2,500-gallon storage tank on a home in West Chino. This fellow's hauling water. There's over 500 homes that are hauling water in West Chino, Southwest Chino, Williamson Valley Road, and in Coyote Springs. Where are they getting that water? They're getting it from you. They're getting it from your hydrant on Easy Street. They're getting it from Chino's hydrant next to Walgreens. They're getting this Prescott Valley's public supply. These people, the value of their home with a dry well just went down by half. It takes them a lot of time to haul that water, or he pays 200 bucks a month or so. So the declining, the overdraft has a number of effects. It's affected Del Rio Springs, it's affected city wells, it's affected domestic wells, and this is something that is just unsustainable. This can't go on forever. I want to say there's not an immediate crisis. It's not like the taps in Prescott and Prescott Valley are going to go dry tomorrow. But this can't, this can't continue. The longer we wait to attack this issue, the more difficult the solution will be.
Councilman Gambogi.
Gary, you don't have to go back, but you had a map a couple of slides ago with a bunch of yellow in it, which represented the wells that have run dry.
They're failing wells, yes.
Any idea what the number is?
Over 500.
And any idea how many total wells there are out there in this, on that slide?
Yes. ADWR estimates there's about 14,000 domestic wells in the AMA.
So 500 out of 18,000 are in trouble.
14,000.
500 out of 14,000.
And they're on the edges of the aquifer. So what happens is, imagine you've got like a bowl with shallow sides, and it's- So what happens is imagine you've got like a bowl with shallow sides and it's full of water. So you dip a gallon of water out of it and the water level in the bowl goes down and the wetted edges shrink in. That's what we're seeing there, exactly. So the longer we wait to deal with this, the more difficult the solution's going to be. And I, and this is our responsibility, the cities in the AMA. It's not ADWR's responsibility. I think we can see from recent effects at the legislature that they're not very effective at helping us. ADWR lacks the resources and the budget to deal with this. They don't, they have, don't have the statutory requirement to deal with getting us to a sustainable water supply. ADWR is busy dealing with Colorado River problems that are essential for central and southern Arizona. So I mean, they can only do so much. We're on our own. Tom Bucowski, the director of ADWR, said those exact words to us, "You're on your own." So now the cities compete for water. What we need is cooperation for regional groundwater management. This is a big problem. It's not easy, but it can be solved. And Mark Holmes has a suggestion for how we could do this, how we could begin to do this. And SEWAG supports his idea.
Thanks, Gary, for the history and the data and scenarios that we were looking at. So the state really, in essence, in the initial AMA declaration and establishment of the AMAs, it's created a water district. It's called the Active Management Area. It has the highest set of laws, rules, regulations, policies and plans. But overdrafting has continued and increased over the last 25 years. With the status quo, as Gary said, safe yield will never be obtained. It will only get a further goal further away from us. The Upper Verde River, as Gary mentioned, is also being impacted. All the groundwater overdrafting is affecting the groundwater that's moving to the, to the north and that's discharging into the Upper Verde River. So we have overdrafting and impacts on the Upper Verde River. So in essence, this state-established water district is a failed system. It's a failed district. We've had previous organizations in the past. Yavapai County had the Water Advisory Committee, known as historically as the WAC. It was strictly looking at policy and planning and trying to work together both on the west and the east side of Yavapai County, trying to come together and establish good policies and plans. We also had the Upper Verde River Watershed Protection Coalition. Again, a policy and planning organization which did a lot of really good education and conservation efforts. We currently still have the Northern Arizona Municipal Water Users Association. It's an outstanding policy and planning and lobbying organization that's very effective in what they're doing. And we also have you as municipalities, Chino Valley and Prescott Valley and the county. They are looking within their jurisdictions and looking at their own water resource within their corporate boundaries, their water resource management goals and activities. And we have 25-plus NGOs that are trying to partner and look at ways we can try and solve, solve these big issues. So even with the AMA, a state-declared district and the highest level regulatory oversight, again, it's a failed system. All the associated water organizations that have been established, that some have failed, some have decided to rescind and no longer exist, they've all been focused around policy and planning, which is good, but at the end of the day, doesn't get us where we need to go. So the last statement here is if we only continue to look in our boundaries, we leave out the regional elements and the impacts such as safe yield, such as the impacts on the Upper Verde River base flows and the local and regional impacts on our aquifer. So the problem facing our region is bigger than any one entity's capabilities or even the states. The state is doing all that it believes is good for trying to solve these, these are gigantic challenges. And they are bigger than anyone, any one entity's capabilities. And even the state funding that was available, we're all competing with urban Phoenix and other municipalities down south and some of their huge financial needs. So the solutions needed will require a new regional authority, whatever that looks like. But something has to be created that we can all work together and look at regional authority, look at regional capital, look at a regional planning structure that goes beyond the city of Prescott's corporate boundaries, goes beyond Chino Valley, looks within the county. So more in a watershed-level scale. We also have to change the conversation. Everyone living here is contributing to the water resource problems, whether you're on an exempt well, I am, or you're on a municipal supply, everybody's contributing to the water resource problems. But not everybody is contributing to the water resource solutions. We have to change this, that everyone will need to contribute to the solutions and no one is exempt anymore, no loopholes. We have to develop a new model with more growth, come better, more robust solutions, which is opposite of trying to close the door on growth and try to stop land entitlement. So let's look at these paradigm shifts and I think there are opportunities that can be successful. I will add, we cannot conserve or educate our way to these solutions. They are bigger. Those are good, these are great, conservation, education, they are essential, quintessential for how we try and decrease demand within our jurisdictions and water use, trying to better manage it. But they will not get us to sustainable water resource management. Water needs to be regionally managed and needs to look at understanding the local and the regional impacts. And again, all jurisdictions, whether you're municipality or the county, if you're plating land, part of that whole land entitlement process, you really are in the water resource business, the reclaimed water business or effluent and also storm water. I just want to share two case studies real quick with you. And there are hundreds throughout the United States that have, have started out many years ago, some are brand new, but some are decades old, looking at problems that are facing us today here. So one example, one is the Water Replenishment District. It's out of the LA Basin area. This was formed by a vote of the people in 1959 for the purpose of protecting the groundwater resources of the central and west coast groundwater basins. Prior to the formation of the district in 1959, unregulated and unmanaged overpumping caused severe overdraft. Sounds familiar. And many water wells, especially irrigation water wells, they went dry. Along the coastline, if you had a well and you were doing irrigation, the water tables dropped so low, they were below sea level and so salt water then intruded in the aquifer. And guess what you did? You contaminated your groundwater supply. So stakeholders met to form a steering committee and they, for engagement to determine, how do we solve these big issues? These are huge. And there's a lot of cities that exist, besides Los Angeles, that exist in those basins. I'm in your packets on this slide presentation, there's some links you can go to for more information. I won't cover all, but there's really good information if you're so inclined. So they determined they wanted to have a governing authority, they have five planning areas, these divisions. Board members are selected through an election process. They represent those districts and the communities within those districts. I just want to share their 2024 budget was $103 million. Their 2024 capital improvement budget was $56 million. There's more budget information there for you to look at. But they are celebrating what's called 60 years of sustainable groundwater management. They now have achieved what we have not yet achieved, sustainable groundwater usage. They're putting the amount of water back in the ground they're pumping out or putting more water back into the ground that they're pumping out. They first started out with this back in the 1959 by importing water from various water projects, recharging that water into the basins, trying to make up for the difference of the groundwater mining. And at the same time, a few years later, they started introducing recycled water, which is basically reclaimed water from, from water reclamation facilities. And the win there is water independence now. In 2004, they said, "We want to be water independent." They wanted to get out of the water importation business because in California, those projects are unsustainable because they rely on snow. And we've been in a drought for a very long time and they are very unreliable. So what they've switched over to is recycled water and storm water. Both of those water supplies are now, as of recently, providing 100% of their recharge water. Another example here in Arizona, I'll share with you. If you're not familiar, some of you may be familiar with this. An IGA, a partnership between Glendale, Mesa, Phoenix, Scottsdale and Tempe to own and operate a regional wastewater system. It's a 91st Avenue water reclamation facility in the West Valley, consisting of a big gigantic wastewater interceptor. It's about 96 inches, running from Mesa all the way over to 91st Avenue. It's a gigantic pipe. And those cities then discharge their wastewater on that interceptor which goes to 91st Avenue. And by the way, because this has got a great economy of scale, they're actually treating wastewater at half price than the other jurisdictions are in their water reclamation business. So economies of scale, they're, they're realized here. And they share ownership of the sewer collection and treatment system. But really what makes this amazing is, first of its kind, 1979, this water, this effluent that's been shipped from and processed at the 91st Avenue plant is providing the 80,000 acre-feet that are used by Palo Verde Nuclear Power Generation. As a desert, it's the largest nuclear power generating station in the western hemisphere in the United States. And it's truly a desert facility that's working and operating with these long partnerships with the communities. It's a great example, very similar to what could be done here in this region. I provide some more background information. Their annual operation and maintenance budget was $63 million, which those communities share in that. And their capital improvement budget was $16 million. That's just one year of many, but they have a lot of good background information there. Yavapai County, it is a 10 billion gross domestic product county. It's the fourth best in the state behind Maricopa, Pima and Pinau counties. So it's a very good county from a standpoint of its prosperous. The largest portions of the GDP are associated real estate and businesses that are part of that whole organization. There are some other inputs into the GDP, but most of it is really derived from, and I got a little chart there, from the real estate market, land entitlement, development and so forth. So how would we determine the best approach for regionalism in the Upper Verde River watershed? Like other organizations have done, they've formed an exploratory steering committee. And you meet and start discussing some of these complex issues. We could create an IGA. I think that's where Chino wants to, to try and move forward with not only Prescott, the city of Prescott, but Prescott Valley, the county, whoever wants to come to the table, we would like to form an IGA. And it's solely to look at, let's meet, confer and to discuss what the options could look like. Let's spell out something, could it be successful? And that's, I think, really it's about having discussions and conversations. We should, we should also think about considering the hiring of a professional facilitator, someone who can help guide those conversations, who understands the water issues. And there are several of them in the state and the local area. It may require a small amount of money and also in-kind, in-kind work from your staff. Some of the things that could be looked at, just throwing some of many out there just for consideration, who should participate in this steering committee's effort? Should we have elected officials as a main board? Should we have subcommittees and staff, technical, all that kind of breakout? We could also explore the type of organization that'd be a best fit, both looking at water, sewer and then the storm water aspect. We do get a lot of water here. It comes in maybe only a few rainy events, but when it does, it's a large volume and we're currently not taking advantage of that. What kind of governance should this organization have? How would it be funded? If we're looking to do bona fide, science-based, significant projects to utilize thousands of acre-feet, that was going to, that's going to require a lot of capital. How would that be raised? That would have to be discussed.
Councillor Montoya had a question?
Yeah, I just, Mark, I appreciate everything you laid out here. I was actually part of one of those failed organizations in the region, as you're aware of, Upper Verde Watershed Coalition, Protection Coalition. I missed a P there, but it's a very long acronym that was unwieldy, much like the organization was. And I remember towards the end of Prescott's participation in that program, you were kind of pushing forward for some revamping of a better working group. I think, for lack of a better way to put it, that working group had kind of become non-functional with one stakeholder, kind of monopolizing the direction and, and the outcomes, so to speak. I'm curious, I remember seeing your output for redefining how that working group would work. Is it safe to say that a lot of what you're presenting to us today is based on some of that work?
I would say that, that, that organization before it terminated, I think I was, some of the activities were, let's start having these discussions because the county was there and the municipalities were there already. And so we don't want to reinvent a lot of things. Sometimes we're really good at doing that, but we already had a coalition that was meeting and we were already talking about doing the bylaws. Why not start talking? But some of the concepts were there, some of the ideas and concepts and examples.
So one question I have for you, if I can just follow up on that. Have you imagined expanding the stakeholders who would be involved in a coalition like that? Because I know it's, it's always useful to have elected leaders and then technical staff part of it, but I know, I think towards the end of the coalition's existence, Nature's Conservancy had come on board as potentially a member. I'm curious if you've thought about that part of it?
In relation to a new organization, I think the right people that are going to be the decision-makers are the core of that. But in the steering committee effort, and I think even with a organization that may come out of this, having the NGOs engage, listening to very smart people who have been studying water here for multiple decades, that's a resource we want to take advantage of. We want to hear their questions. We want to hear, if they're all in support of this, we want to hear that. If they have issues against certain things, can we find common ground? But at the end of the day, there has to be significant money to create capital projects that actually put something into the ground that resembles, you know, through the years it may take. You saw the one example they formed in 1959. This, this new organization may have to be around for 60 years to have success, true success. It may have to have many years of phased work, but at the end of the day, there's money and there's decision-makers. And where that money comes from, I think at the end of the day, you got to have the decision-makers coming together on regional plans and prioritization and then making decisions on where that money's spent.
Thank you.
Mayor Perotiam?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, we have spent a lot of time, decades, talking about this, but the reality of it is, so for example, down here in the historic area, we have all these homes that have been around for 100-plus years. It's a little harder to capture the reuse, the water from those homes because we haven't been set up that way. In the new planned area developments, is it going forward, is it a requirement for recharge? And I mean, have we crafted anything that's actually binding to be able to do that? Because that's one issue. But if you come back down into the historic area and you think about all these old homes and how do we hook them into the system for recharge? I'm assuming there's massive grants because that's going to be multi-millions of dollars to be able to do that. What about the grant funding? Is ADEQ involved in this or how would you go about starting maybe with one district and maybe making a prototype? And possibly there is one?
Mayor, members of the council, that's a great question. I don't want to get ahead of a future committee and organization. I will never speak for them. We're, I think we're at a steering committee, but your question is valid and right on. I think that, here's what I can tell you. We have a flood control district, which is Yavapai County, and we've incorporated flood control components within our jurisdiction. Many of us also have sewer collection systems. We already have in place, we're about, I will say halfway there on flood control. Whatever falls on rooftops and streets has been channelized to ensure that we're not causing harm on down gradient lands. So it's, I think it's more about, if it's an old community, this organization can retrofit capital expenses and projects to interface with those. Here's how I kind of look at this. And stormwater really is, to your point, besides reclaim, I think we're all doing our part to collect, treat and recharge as much reclaimed water, like our larger communities in the South. Stormwater is really the unrealized water resource. We get 450,000 acre-feet per year that fall here as precipitation on average per year. How do we start collecting that? I think, right on, it's developments. They have rooftops, they have streets, it's being channelized. It's retrofitting infrastructure to go connect with those. It may require certain things. Those are big expensive capital projects. But anything new would maybe have requirements. This new organization may recreate ordinances that require, if, let's say they built, and I was going to give an example later, but let's just say there was an interceptor like the Shrog, a great big pipe that ran along the Peavine Trail from Watson Lake all the way to Chino Valley and then further to the Upper Verde River. And you start plugging in these developments into this. When it rains, it goes, they may have to retain some on-site because sometimes we get massive storms that are 100-year or 500-year. There's a lot of engineering in that, but you can bring that water. It's going to require treatment and then you can start recharging. But that may be thousands of acre-feet. Some of that water can be further, it's all by gravity, which we are in a very good position here from a gravity flow basin. Further gravity out further north and you're right next to the Upper Verde River, there could be recharge projects there that could help maintain the base flow of, of the Upper Verde River. So I think prioritizing, you know, what's new and trying to make that work. But to your point, there's going to be a lot of, I think, this organization have to look at the low-hanging fruit, what's the easiest to start plugging in. But I look at the, the energy, the solar projects, you're probably all familiar with. What do they do? They build a solar farm, whether it's on rooftops in communities or it's a great big, you know, 200-acre solar farm. What are they doing? They're plugging into the grid. Similarly, developments are the rainwater collectors that need to be then tied into Similarly, developments are the rainwater collectors that need to be then tied into some infrastructure that can put, you know, treat and put water back into the ground, dealing with this gigantic issue of overdraft, and then put some more water further north in the Upper Verde River.
Well, just for clarity, the problem on your, if I'm looking at the older areas now, they are what they are. You know, obviously, you'd have to retrofit that. The planned area developments that are new, according to what you're just saying, are kind of already plugged in. But then there's the issue of the wells. So are you insinuating in this that basically a lot of those, you know, Wildcat Wells, or whatever they call them out there, are those the biggest problem? Or is it the plugging in of the whole existing system?
It's everybody is drawing water, whether it's City of Prescott wells or it's exempt wells. Just in aggregate, the third-largest water user, and it's nowhere close to the volume, but the third-largest water user in the AMA is the aggregate of exempt wells. So they're getting access to withdraw water, but they're not recharging any water. And so if they're part of the solution, they're going to have to participate, and most likely it'll be a financial contribution. Somebody's going to have to put water back into the ground to try and, you know, Gary was showing the yellow thumbtack, so where the aquifers, and I've seen the groundwater models, those areas are almost virtually dry. So it's trying to put water back into areas that make sense from, can you rejuvenate the aquifer in some of these areas that are impacted? Does the City of Prescott Wells area need water? What makes sense, if you're all part of a new water authority, it's that regional planning where you're all working together to ensure that your needs are being met, the county needs are being met, Chino Valley's needs are being met, and the environmental issues, the overdrafting in the river. I think, to your point, it's just, there's going to be some, and the city's done a lot of plans, and that's awesome, but they're going to have to be integrated with more regional plans, looking beyond your corporate boundary. And then determining what's the priority projects to do. And it's going to take, this is no, this is, you know, just a realistic statement, it's going to take decades. And it's going to cost money, and it's going to have to be done through prioritization of projects through decades. And but, if the, I think if the new organization is created and has really got the fervor to go forward and realize that long-term vision down the road, when our grandchildren say, oh my goodness, if they hadn't done that, where would we be today? That's where we want to be, is that things are sustainably being like, just a couple of examples, but there are hundreds of examples of success where the challenges are so great, we in Chino Valley, USC Prescott, or Prescott, we can't solve those independently anymore. That ship has left the harbor.
There is funding. I mean, would there be funding?
So you're going to, there is some funding, but from, I can't predict what's going to be available in 10 years or five years, but here's the thing, this organization's going to have to be savvy. It's going to probably have to have expert grant people or hire consultants that look at grants and look at what's available. We have to be competitive. There's money at the state through WIFA, conservation, or other infrastructure projects there, and that's low-interest money, or maybe grant and loan money, because some of the communities here are disadvantaged and might get access to some of the grant loan, or it's federal money. It's federal lobbying. I'm not a lobbyist, but that's a complex network. So this group would have to be very savvy, look at any and all available money, but I think from a standpoint, as Gary mentioned, we're on our own. We do have a very viable county that has a very high GDP. Whether communities decide that they want to raise capital by various means, they can. Maybe jurisdiction says, we want to do sales tax, we want to do an ad valorem, we want to do something else. And they can be versatile. I think that's what the steering committees have to look at, is, you know, what is comfortable today with the organizations if they come together? Where is that revenue? But you're talking large capital, and it's going to have to grow through time. Maybe some of the utilities will say, we don't want to run the utility anymore. We want to have everything governed and operated and maintained by this new water authority. Maybe that's a benefit to the City of Prescott. I don't know. I know from Chino Valley, I don't think they're opposed to that. They could say, you know, Chino Valley's got a lot of vacant land, and we're not opposed to having this new water authority take it over. But great questions. Startup staffing, existing staffing, do they get just blended in? Or is the, like City of Prescott, you're going to operate, maintain your own system, but it's part of a regional system? That happens a lot. There's, that's part of that regional effort, IGA and so forth. But again, we have to look at establishing regional planning. So we have to look beyond our corporate boundaries. We have to have good goals. We have to have an organization, it's got to have master planning. Looking at, you know, these various water supplies, water resources. There's also the big Chino, water importation. It may be part of this whole new organization that goes and says, we're going to step up, this is part of our capital project, that, you know, Prescott and Prescott Valley want to import water, that may be something that could be achieved, just like the Arizona Municipal Water Use Association is the umbrella corporation for the Shrog, the example two I gave. So what are the next steps, just moving forward? So town desires to create an IGA. So this has all been memorialized by a town or Chino Valley resolution. We'd like to create an IGA with the jurisdictions and form a steering committee. It's just to have discussions. Can we find a place that we can come together and talk about these issues and maybe inform something? Discuss and support these efforts towards creating something that's a regional organization, maybe with authority focused on collaborative, collaborativity, or achieving safe yield, which is one of the biggest challenges here, along with trying to sustain the historic base flow of the Upper Verde River. No one's ever done an economic analysis of the Upper Verde River, but I would speculate it has a value that is very large for our entire region of what draws people from our recreation, the social value, the environmental value, there's a lot of value with that river as well. The town offers, provide the governing boards and the other regional governments this presentation today that you're hearing. The town also hereby offers to contribute actual or in-kind funding or other resources to help recruit a professional facilitator and staff proficient in water resource to provide administrative support toward this committee and assistance with creating a final report, a final report that could be presented to all of the stakeholders. And the town has also has sent a letter of this, along with the resolution, to you all. Benefits of regionalism, these are kind of, we're already kind of used to this, improve the quality of life. We're all about trying to improve that quality of life, property values, et cetera. Provide the financial abilities for large-scale capital projects. We all struggle with our capital projects, and this new organization, if it's formed, is going to have those same challenges with capital financing and capital, large-scale projects. We're trying to solve large and complex issues. These are gigantic issues. But it's to protect the interests of all, under that sustainability three-legged stool, the economic, the social, and environmental. Nobody wants moratorium. We want to see growth part of the solution. We want to see entitlement part of the solution. We want to try and flip that paradigm. We want to improve the efficiency, the effectiveness, and that provides the economy of scales. I kind of already talked about that one example, the big pipe that runs from Prescott all the way down the Peavine to Chino, where development plugs in. That may be a project, and other projects that are part of this. There could be recharging that has to occur at various places based on priorities of that, but that'll have to be wrangled out once you start looking at regional planning. But it needs to be a bona fide legal advocate and a voice for our region and state. I think far, for far too long, rural Arizona, northern Arizona, has had, lacking a voice down in Maricopa County at the legislature. One thing I will tell you as a final party note is, I've been on, and I think Mayor Good has been on for a long time, the Rural Water Working Group. They have been trying to pass legislation for five years unsuccessfully because of a few legislators that are standing in the way. I think that part of this discussion is going to have to look at, if this organization is part of the steering committee efforts, should it move forward? What kind of organization, legal framework, how can you form this that makes sense? And I think we have to stay away from that statutory framework and try and look within our legal bounds to do something that we have the capabilities of forming, and it could be an IGA or something like that. With that, Gary and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Oh, Mark, I'll make a couple of comments. I made an attempt to try to form a cooperative group with our four municipalities in the county a little less than three years ago. So my original intention was just to be able to have all of our municipalities come up with an agreement on some basic conservation issues and incentives that we could all agree on, that would allow us to reduce our overdraft. Not going to reach a safe yield solution, but it was an attempt to step in the right direction. Within an hour of that first meeting, two of the four municipalities decided to not cooperate and not move forward, including Chino Valley. So the direction was pointed at the Upper Verde Water Protection Coalition, saying, well, here's an organization that already exists and are already doing all this. Well, when I looked into that, I found out they hadn't done anything that was measurable in over 10 years. And to claim that all these plans were already published and designed on their website, website hadn't been updated in 10 years. And then Councilman Montoya, who was a liaison to that group, was trying to get even just a basic business plan or a profit and loss statement from him. We couldn't get that either, so we ended up pulling out. So I think in order to organize and set up an organization like this, we have to start and then grow incrementally by building some trust in the community at large that an organization can deliver measurable improvements. If we were able to do that, then I think there would be more willingness to formalize the organization and provide funding for it to move forward. But I think it's got to be built on deliverables and building trust. And one of the problems we have is the politician cycle. I mean, you may get some politician in there that's a big supporter and helps it move forward, and two years later, you get somebody else who wants to pull the plug on the thing. So that's one of the problems we had, and just like our attempts to try to get legislative support at the state legislature, over five years, we just found a roadblock that was just immovable. So I think the idea is laudable, and I think it's, without some broad cooperation, we're never going to be able to even reduce the overdraft, much less achieve safe yield. So I think it needs to start. We need to get some good cooperation, and then we have to start showing that this organization can deliver on what its goals are. And I think once we have that, then we might be able to build something a little more substantial that would have access to larger funding, and then be able to focus that on capital improvement projects that would really make a dramatic impact on reducing our overdraft and, God willing, be able to approach safe yield. So that's my initial comment on it. Councilman Gamboge.
When I first decided to run for city council, the first subject matter expert I talked to was Mark Holmes. I go to SEWAG meetings. I even took a trip up at the Perkinsville Bridge with Gary to measure river flow, and I spend a lot of time with Gwen and her staff of Brian and Leslie. I've come to the conclusion from all that work that I don't know water. The other conclusion I've come to is there's a lot of people in this city that say they know water, and they don't know water. I'm glad you guys came here today because I find that this council spends an inordinate amount of time on issues that are not crises. This is the crisis. This is one of my top four issues that need to be resolved in this city. So Gary, Mark, thank you very much.
Do we have any public comment on this?
We do. Mayor Sherri Hanna.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Sherri Hanna. So I appreciate Mark's presentation. There was a, could be a couple of things I wanted to talk about, but he touched on them. But the one thing that wasn't mentioned, which is very critical, is we need to have enough water for our firefighters if we're ever in another situation like we've been in, when we have a fire breakout here in the City of Prescott. About a month and a half ago, because I was chair, co-chair of Proposition 478, I was invited down to the state by Senator Mark Fincham to testify before all the state senators on the issue of being fire-wise for our insurance companies, because you know, right now, we were, we, the whole state is under where insurance companies are canceling our insurance or raising the rates because of the fire situation, and we don't have, our response times are up, and just what we've seen in California, which affects the whole country. So there were other fire chiefs from around the state, there were wildland firefighters, there were insurance companies there, and real estate representatives. But what I was asked to talk about is how Prescott was making a good-faith effort by taxing themselves to provide fire protection for our town, which would help with our insurance rates. So, and actually, you know, it was something that we would provide, we were going to provide the capital improvements, provide more personnel, police, and fire to help with these emergencies. That's what Proposition 478 was intended to do, and also bring down our response times. So that is so important to go along with this. Now, we saw in California where they had reservoirs that were depleted, or they had storage tanks for water, that there wasn't enough water in them when their firefighters needed it. So maybe we could include this as a part of the plan when we go forward. I know we do have water tanks here in the City of Prescott, but maybe to ensure that we would have enough water to fight a fire that we could maybe plan for another one, or ensure that we will have water availability for our firefighters. And that would go a long way in helping our representatives at the state, and I know Congressman Crane is working diligently to try-
Thirty seconds, Ms. Hanna.
And, you know, figure out this problem. So that's all I wanted to say. Just don't forget about our firefighters and the resources and our police and fire need when emergencies like firefight occur. Thank you.
Howard Mechanic.
Mr. Mayor and Council, over 15 years ago, there were two organizations, government organizations, Upper Verde Watershed Protection Coalition and the AMA organization, GUAC, that established committees to study the safe yield issue and come up with suggested solutions. I was privileged to serve on both of those committees. The committees, first committee reported, report unanimously suggested that there be a regional solution, and that the region get together and discuss a regional solution. The second committee followed up, agreed with that, and suggested specifically on a replenishment district. Under state law, any area can establish a replenishment district by a vote of the public. We need the jurisdictions to get together and establish a replenishment district. Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your work on water issues. This is not an incremental issue at this time. We need to have a replenishment district, and we need unified effort. And to address your issue about political change, once a replenishment district is established and has representatives, it will be able to continue. And if one member is a mayor who changes, I don't see how that's going to change the replenishment district, which has its own representatives. So if we want continuity, we can have it by having the replenishment district. Otherwise, I don't see a great chance of solving it by having informal discussions without, and handshakes, and agreements, and maybe one party disagrees with one thing, and you need unanimity to do anything. It sounds like that's what you're suggesting. If you need unanimity, a unanimous decision, it's very difficult. So we need a majority of the public to vote. That's all we need, a majority of the public to vote to establish a replenishment district. Thank you.
That's all, Mayor.
Well, thank you very much. I think we probably would like to hear from the council on whether our city should be involved in working with the proposal here to try to craft some type of a foundational organization to see if we can do something on a regional basis that will actually deliver some good results. So let me hear from y'all. Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I often take a look at all the different social media out there and what of all our citizens saying, and every time a new proposal comes before this council and we vote yes, everyone's up in arms, because we're supposed to say no to every single new development coming in order to save our aquifer. And I think we're well beyond in the withdrawal rate that just saying no to anything new is not going to fix the problem. So, and individual communities unto ourselves have proven we're not going to fix the problem. So I'm absolutely supportive of, if my peers agree that the City of Prescott would absolutely be involved in this, I couldn't foresee us being able to afford a stormwater replenishment district unto ourselves. I think it's going to need all the developers joining in and helping, and it's a big, big thing, but we would be able to therefore both potentially eventually grow and improve our economies while saving our aquifer and saving our rivers and saving our culture. And so we got to do something different. I'm in.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I totally second what Councilwoman Ferworth just said. It's got to be a regional effort. There's, because nothing's happening in reality. None of us individually are making this happen, so we've got to form a regional effort to make this happen. It's the only way it's going to work.
Mayor Protan.
There's power in numbers, and I'm in agreement with that, too. I think we need to take a deep dive into it, but we have to come up with solutions and have it quantified so people can buy into it. Thanks.
Councilman Montoya.
I support the efforts of the city manager, getting his staff together to try and figure out a way to work forward with this.
Councilman Gamboge.
I don't know what the answer is, but we got to have an answer.
That kind of sounded like a yes. So Mr. Holmes and Mr. Beverly, here's a situation where you have unanimity. So the City of Prescott is going to finally ask Councilman Grady.
Yeah.
You're way in your, even though I have a feeling I know what his answer is going to be, but, Councilman Grady.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm late to understanding how to push the button for speaker request. So I was a little slow. Yeah, I am very supportive of this as well, and I do think that public-private collaboration and partnerships have been successful around the country, and yes, it appears that we have a pretty discouraging record of doing that here in the Quad Cities region, but we can't afford not to try again. So I hope those of you that have been really actively involved in regional water issues will try to look a little deeper and find out and address what were the issues that actually made all that fall apart, and what can we do differently to make it a successful collaboration.
Thank you, Councilman Grady. So as I said, I think we have unanimity here, and we will proceed with supporting the development and the organization of this regional, kind of laudable regional effort. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for your time today. Thank you.
All right, it's 10 minutes to three. We'll adjourn this study session and then reconvene for our voting meeting at 3 o'clock.